We'll call the meeting to an end of the council on June 18th, or August 18th, I'm sorry. Rule call.
Mayor Yanish.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Ammon.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dockin.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBleek.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Would you all please stand as we say the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would appreciate it if you would pull the Wilmer Community and Activities Center minutes. We're not there yet.
Pull it or discuss it.
Pardon?
Pull it or discuss it.
When can we get there, please? I'm a little bit quick.
(laughing).
Mr. Mayor, I have moved to approve the consent items.
Second.
Second. With the exception, as I indicated, I would like to pull the Wilmer Community and Activities Center minutes.
With that exception.
Yep.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. We will pull the Wilmer Community Activity Minutes on August 5th, or for August 5th, 2014. Tim, would you like to talk about that?
Well, at the August 5th meeting, the council for the Community and Activities Center passed a motion, which I would like to read, and it does read as follows. "A motion was made by Carol Lamer that the WCAC council supports the City of Wilmer continuing the commitment to the WCAC facilities and programs. This commitment should provide the resources necessary to determine the needs of the current and future users of the Community and Activities Center." And this motion was passed at their August 5th meeting, and we have some of the members of the council present, and I believe Earl Knudsen would like to address the body with respect to that motion.
Please do. If you want to step up here and introduce yourself and tell us your address.
Okay. Name's Earl Knudsen. I live at 722 Second Street Southwest, Wilmer, Ward 3, and I'm a member of the council of the Wilmer Community and Activities Center. So I have something in common with most of you here. I'm a councilman, councilperson, although I didn't have to run for election to get this position. We, at our last meeting, August 5th, a big topic of discussion is what is going to happen to the Community Activity Center after LeAnn Freeman leaves. You know, she's been the manager of that for, I don't know, well before my time, I think. And that was the discussion we had. It came up to this motion that you just heard read. We just think that it's good to have someone there who is not just an administrator, but something of a visionary, who can look around and size up the needs in the community, especially above 50 part of the community, and then look at the resources we have and see what kind of programs we can best put forward to meet the needs of the plus 50 crowd. So we just hope that the city and the city council will find it possible to replace LeAnn Freeman with a very skilled and talented person who can continue what she started.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Earl. Appreciate your work on the council and all of the other members also. And I, you know, as I talked beforehand, I consider the community center to be one of our three major assets in the city. Not only, I put it, you know, with the auditorium and the arena, and I believe that over time we have been a little neglectful of keeping those facilities at the level that they need to be kept. And with respect to the community center, I believe as we get an aging population here in town, the needs are there and we need to meet those continuously. And I think that, I mean, every time I stop out there, it's busy. It's a very busy scene, and I enjoy going out there and seeing how busy it is when I talk to LeAnn. So thanks again for coming.
Thank you.
Councilman Dockin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to reiterate Councilman Johnson's comments and those of Earl. I served out there for about six years, and Earl and his wife and Shirley Halst are really huge citizens, supporters of that community center, and we really need to keep those folks in mind because they provide a tremendous service to the senior population, of which I happen to be one proudly, but I don't go there that often yet. But it's a great place, and just ask you to keep in mind the senior senator, Mr. Mayor, so that
Thank you.
...gets funded properly and that we listen to those folks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question and process. I see that the recommendation is, you know, to hire a full-time aquatics person and then two part-timers. How does this flow? If we approve these minutes, are we then saying that that's appropriate, or is that just an idea? Or, I see Mr. Brizendine isn't here, so I'll have to ask the administrator.
By approving these minutes, you're not approving those staffing positions. Under the agreement with the Wilmer School District, LeAnn's position will actually be replaced as a school district employee, not a City of Wilmer employee. How that position is structured, I mean, there's still some discussion that's going to take place between the school district and the city. I mean, Mr. Brizendine's made a proposal on how he would like to see that position structured. Whether that ultimately is the decision that's made by the superintendent, myself, or the Joint Powers Board, that remains to be discussed. So by approving these minutes, you're not approving that.
Okay.
And a job description hasn't been finalized or even drafted at this point. I mean, I think there's different ways to go about the position, I mean, and there's different ways to also supervise that facility with the staff that is part of community and rec, and that's what we're working through.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Yanish.
Go ahead.
Just a question. I've had a concern about buildings being open without having staff in them, and I know that's the case with auditorium. It's also a case with the community center at some point in time. So is that a different subject than just this, or will that be something that should be addressed at the same time?
Well, I think that the intent would be to certainly try to have staffing there when the building is open, whether that's a full-time position or it's staffed by some part-time supervision. I think, you know, that's, I think there's an opportunity there. It doesn't necessarily have to be staffed by one full-time person out there the entire time. It could be staffed by part-timers as well. But to have a presence there when the building's open does certainly make a lot of sense.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, again. Just a question and process. If we're going to plan to do any changes at that center, would it not necessarily go to the Labor Committee first? That's a question.
I'm not sure. Do you have the answer to that?
I don't know that it would. I think, you know, first, the first step is to look at some of the proposed job descriptions and the structuring that Mr. Brizendine's proposing, and then we'll bring that forward.
Thank you. Further discussion?
If we're done, Mr. Mayor, I'd move to file the minutes.
Second.
With the Community Center and Activity Minutes of August 5th in there?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. I will open the hearing for the street vacation hearing for a portion of Wilmer Avenue Southwest. Bruce, do you want to tell us about that?
Mayor Yanish, members of the council, being proposed is a vacation of that portion of Wilmer Avenue Southwest that lies west of the BNSF tracks and terminates at the former junction of, or at the junction of former State Highway 40. The reason for that vacation is twofold. Ultimately, it's part of the real estate that's being transferred to Genio Turkey Store, and secondly, it's necessary so that we can proceed with the opening of Wilmer Avenue, the new Wilmer Avenue, which we anticipate should be open within probably as early as the next two weeks. So it's a recommendation of staff that the council adopts the resolution vacating the street as described in their resolution.
The hearing is open to the public. Is there any questions or comments from the public? Go ahead. Do you want to come up to the front? Introduce yourself and your name and address.
Sure. Bob Enos, 905 Trot Avenue Southwest. Now, this is the same project that's been going on for about two months now, correct?
That's right.
So, you know, I'm sure we're meeting the letter of the law, state law, so far as providing a forum for public comment on a project, especially one of this size. The part where I think we all kind of dropped the ball here, and I'm sure I probably don't need to tell you this, but I'll say it out loud anyway, is that this is sort of trying to close the barn door after the horse has left. We're probably meeting the letter of the law by having this opportunity for public input, but realistically, the input's not going to make any difference now unless you're prepared to put the road back where it was and fill the hole. So I would hope that in the future, you time this all out a lot more appropriately so that the public has reason to feel that its input is going to make some kind of a difference into the decision-making process, because clearly, that's not going to happen this go-around. You dropped the ball. Let's do better the next time. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Any further comments? Hearing done, I will close the public hearing and open it up to the council. Do they have any questions? Do you have any questions or comments?
I'll move to approve the vacation.
Second.
The motion has been made, and seconded to approve the vacation of the hearing for a portion of Wilmer Avenue Southwest. Is that a resolution?
Yes, sir.
Rule call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. I will open the hearing for the ordinance number 1265 by approving a new fee schedule for contractors.
Mayor Yanish, members of the council, approximately two months ago, by action of the council, staff was directed to pursue the adoption of a new building and plumbing permit fee schedule. The ordinance has been prepared using the fees recommended by staff and as discussed by the committee on June 12th, 2014, and the full council on June 16th.
Can we get that fee schedule?
What's being proposed is the middle column, the 1997 Uniform Building Code Fee Schedule. Currently, the city operates under the 1994 Uniform Building Code Fee Schedule. There's an approximately 10%, 11%, 12% difference depending upon the valuation of the project between the 94 and the 97 fee schedule for permit fees. Can you shift ahead to the next one? Staff has, for a number of years, done cost accounting to try to approximate the true cost of providing the service. There are some who would believe that the true cost is only the cost to have the building inspectors conduct the permit application, plan review, and inspections, but I would argue that the process is much broader and much deeper than that. A number of years ago, I went to each department and asked them to tell me what percentage of each of their budgets they thought were applicable or tied to the process of issuing permits and tracking inspections. The numbers you see up there are the numbers that I got back, ranging from a low of one-half of 1% with the PD, with the Police Department, up to 60% of the Planning and Development Services budget. And the reason that's so high is because there's planning staff that are involved on a daily basis in the review of the plans, as well as the inspectors. The result of the building permit cost accounting can be shown in the next slide. I went back 2011, 2012, and 2013 and calculated approximately what the costs were to provide the services based on adopted budgets for those years. And you can see that the cost has remained pretty consistent in that $440,000 to $450,000 range, but you'd also note that permit revenues in 2011 and 2012 were not even sufficient to make up half the cost of providing the service. It did come closer in 2013, and I'm not exactly sure why it's that close. I'm guessing it's a combination of two things. Ongoing budget reductions, which makes the percentages between the estimated costs and the permit revenues, it eats up some of that difference. You'll notice last year, there was only about a $1,000 difference between the cost to provide the service and the fees we took in. You might also note that our building permit fee revenues last year went from $116,000 in 2012 to $236,000. So that shows the strength of the construction that we're seeing in town, and we did see virtually a tripling in construction value from 2012 to 2013. So, you know, I think it's time we take a look at adjusting these fees. The council's the one that makes the determination regarding revenues and where you wish to see your funds come from. Building permit fees are a user fee. They're paid by the user of the service, and in my opinion, the bulk of that cost should absolutely be borne by the people that use the service and not fall on the taxpayers for the City of Wilmer. That being said, I'll leave the discussion to the mayor and council. And again, it's a staff recommendation that the 1997 Uniform Building Code Fee Schedule be implemented effective January 1st, 2015.
Thank you. Is there any comments from the public? Go ahead.
You know who I am?
I do, but identify yourself.
Okay. Bob Enos, 905 Trot Avenue Southwest. Couple of things on this before I get into some numbers, and I won't take very long, I promise.
Okay.
Over the course of the past summer, the Chair of the Federal Reserve, Janet Yellen, testified before both houses of Congress on the state of the economy nationally. She made it clear that in the opinion of her economists and most economists in the United States, that the single largest threat to economic recovery in the United States right now is the flat activity in the construction of new homes. We knew there was a lot of pent-up demand for housing coming out of the housing crisis. The resale of existing houses has done very well across the country, but as many of you in the constructions trades know, that has not been the case for new building. Now, it's not very likely that an increase in any of these fees are going to change the minds of consumers if they're ready to build a house. What should concern us, though, is that when we increase fees on the building trades at a time when they're doing everything they can do to sustain their business, and when we know that the industry for new construction for housing is doing so poorly, it sends the wrong message to the building trades. It tells the building trades that perhaps we're out of touch with their market and with their economy. So it might not be worth the amount of money that you're going to raise from these fees for the bad will that you might want to create for construction projects that you want to come into Wilmer. Second thing and last thing that I'd like to say, I've looked at many of the figures here already that the city staff has presented you. I don't know about all of the grid of expenses come from all these other departments for inspections. I don't know how anybody could actually figure that out. But when I go to the bottom line, here's what I see. From 2011 to 2013, the revenue from those building inspection fees went up 220%. Now, during that same two-year period, if you go back to look through the public records, there isn't anything in the public records that show that there were reductions in force or personnel cuts over those last two years for city staff as a result of building not going so well. There wasn't anything to suggest they had to hire new people to do more building inspections because they were falling behind. My point is, you've had fixed overhead all these last two years, but at the same time, you've gotten another $240,000 in revenue. I'd suggest to the council that you might want to think that economies of scale being what they are, if anything, building fees should go down. You're providing a level of service with the same overhead, getting twice the money, and now you want to have increases in the fees. That's fuzzy math. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much. Any further comments? Name and address?
Name and address. Chad Compton, 310 County Road 9. Honorable Mayor Yanish and council members, you should have all received a letter via email, and you each have one on your desks, from the Builders Association of Minnesota and the West Central Builders Association. I won't go read it in entirety, but on behalf of the builders that pay these permit fees, we want to remind the city that current Minnesota law requires communities annually to report all construction development-related fees, and it prohibits communities from using building permit revenue for purposes other than the purpose for which they are collected. The state statute also requires, or requires, an annual report to be done by June 30th. It's supposed to be turned into the Department of Labor and Industry. And there are, Bruce Peterson put up a list on how it was accounted and how, we can all argue on how much of each one of those are supposed to be in building permits. And I understand that's where he got the dollar amounts for his list, so. But they need to be, any fees that are collected need to be used for that purpose, and that purpose only. And they're supposed to be reasonably proportionate in actual cost. So we urge you to carefully review the revenue and expenditures related to the recent idea of raising the City of Wilmer building permit fees. We also expect the city will comply with state law requiring the reporting of the construction and development fees, something the city has missed, has failed to do in the last four years. You know, and we really encourage, you know, the city must not act on increasing its building permit fees. A review of fees must be completed. The reports to the state submitted, and the city should consider, should only consider increasing fees if clearly necessary to support the services for which they have been collected. This letter was signed by our local president, Charlie Homquist, from the West Central Builders Association, and myself from the Builders Association of Minnesota. Also in your packet that I gave you, there is the report from 2008 and 2010 that was done with the Department of Labor and Industry. And we can all argue on what the expense for the city is in 2011, 12, and 13. But for some reason, in 2010, the expense was on the state report was only $335,000, and for some reason, now we're looking at $437,000 for this department. Roughly $100,000 difference. So I think that would need some explanation on how one state report a year earlier can be $100,000 different. And maybe the city really needs to look at it from a standpoint of not on a year-to-year basis. If you went back 10 years and you looked at what the fees were that came in and the expenses that went out on that 10-year basis, the city shouldn't be doing too bad. It's well all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments or whatever from the public? Hearing done, I will close the public hearing and open it up to the council. Do you have questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I totally agree with Mr. Enos's comments. We, we in the school system seem to be becoming more of a fee-based government entity than property taxes. We don't know the true cost of government unless you add all the fees that are collected by government. And this is one, a building permit fee. When we started building back in 79, 80, it was $100 to build a home in Wilmer, Minnesota, no matter what the size of the house. It went to $200 a few years later, and we just thought, holy smokes, how can you double that? Well, now you know what it's come to. It's thousands of dollars for a building permit fee to build in Wilmer, Minnesota. It's utterly ridiculous. And to say that all of those departments up there are a percentage of that building permit fee, I would ask, where in our budget is a reliant item in each of those departments for revenue from building permit fees? I've never seen one. Has anybody here seen one? Staff? We budget for each of those departments every year, whether or not we build one house in Wilmer. Doesn't matter. If there was no construction this year, guess what? They all get paid. Police Department, Fire Department, Engineering, every department that they had up there listed. So I can't see where their revenue, it's become a revenue source. I, I being a businessman in Wilmer and being here 35 years in business, I get the feeling that government is looking at me as a source of revenue. And I think they are. Now they're looking at people, potential home builders, as a source of revenue. If you figured out that the building permit fee in most, in Wilmer, is about the same as the first-year property taxes that they're going to pay the next year, anywhere from 1% to 2%. Recently, in the last couple of years, the county lost one of their building permit, or building officials. He retired. They decided not to hire another official. They came to the city and said, can you help us with building permit fees? Do the plan reviews, and maybe if there's some close inspections within the city, go out and do them. Now, I asked at the last council meeting, for a dollar amount, how much per hour we pay, or the county pays the city, to do that work. I haven't received that yet. I also asked for five years, the last five years, I've got three years here. Do we know what it costs per hour to the county to hire our inspectors? If it's X amount of dollars, that's what we should be charging for fees in Wilmer, Minnesota. If they're paying us 50 bucks an hour, that's what we should be collecting. Maybe, maybe the city should subcontract out their building permit, or their, yeah, the building permit and the fees. The county's doing it to the city. We are subcontracting to the county for an agreed amount, and I'll darn bet you, it's a whole lot less than it would be to have an employee over there working. Maybe we should have one permitting office in the county. Presently, we have three. There's the city one, four blocks away, there's the county one, and a few miles down the road, there's Spicer and New London. They all have those offices because it generates revenue, and that revenue goes far beyond paying for that office. If it isn't about generating revenue, then let's put them all over in the county building. Let's have all permits issued by the county. One office, three inspectors, one secretary, instead of three offices, four inspectors and three secretaries. It would save taxpayers money, and that's part of our job here, a big part of our job, looking at the purse strings. I just claim that it's a revenue stream, and fees don't need to be raised. I suspect we should probably lower them. We have been fortunate- I, uh, we have been fortunate to be busy building homes. However, they aren't middle-income homes, average-income homes. They're above-average homes. Last year, we built a home, I would consider it a low-income home, a 26-foot by 38-foot split-entry, upper-level finished only with an attached double garage. In 1981, I built that same home without a garage on a lot for $48,000. That home last year cost $141,000 without the lot. I have the building permit fee here in front of me for that particular home. I got the plans. You can see, it's a very modest home. What do you think that building permit fee costs? I'll ask everyone on the council except Mr. Ahma, because he probably knows. Do you have any idea what that fee for that home was? It was $1,666 for the building permit, $105 for the mechanical permit, and $160 for the plumbing permit. About $1,900. This young lady we built that home for could use that money to do landscaping. She couldn't afford to do landscaping. Fees are too high, folks. We're not going to build middle-income homes in Wilmer when fees are $2,000 for a small home. I don't know what we're doing here, but we should be the shining hill, shining city on a hill, have the lowest permit fees in the state, attract people here. We build a home in Wilmer, they start to pay taxes for as long as that home is, exists. We're getting money every year from it. So why do we want to bump it up front and get it so high? I, I, I can't believe that we're thinking of raising fees. I, I agree with Mr. Enos, and we should probably lower them, and, uh, I'll let others speak, and, uh, I've got some more to say later.
Is there any further comments on this? Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, of course, got the letter that, uh, Mr. Compton referred to when he spoke. And I did take some time to pull up some of the statutes, uh, that govern what we can charge for fees and how they relate to our expenses. And my concerns are that the statute does say that the fees must be fair, reasonable, and proportionate, and have a nexus to the actual cost of the service for which the fee is imposed. In other words, there should be some balance. This isn't to be, uh, I'd have to, um, qualify Mr., our Councilman Christensen's, uh, concerns that, uh, the statute deals with one of those concerns, and that is, uh, the fees have to equal the expenses, basically, is what the statute says. That's my understanding, and, uh, anybody has any questions, they can probably refer them to Mr. Scott when I'm done. And when I look at the numbers that we got, uh, we have 2011 and 2012, when things were still running a little slow with our economy. But in 2013, it looks like the fees and expenses just about balanced out. That's what we're supposed to achieve. When I look at the fees and expenses for 2011 and 2012, I take into consideration that the economy hadn't really revved up to the level that it is currently and was building to all of 2013. So, um, it looks to me like our fees are right on point where they should be. They basically equal our costs. Uh, we had a difference, we're talking about almost $450,000, and we had a distant, diff, uh, difference of $1,100. That's pretty damn close. Another thing that the statute requires is that a municipality must adopt management and accounting procedures to ensure that fees are maintained and used only for the purpose for which they are collected. I'm a little concerned that our method here was to ask our various, uh, employees and departments for estimates of what they thought they were, and, and my understanding was that happened a few years ago, so I, I have some concerns that we really, uh, by raising the fees, that we're going in the wrong direction here. I don't see any reason to lower them, because it seems like we're hitting the mark. I don't know what our fees or expenses are for 2014 for, uh, we should have enough data, I would think, to give some indication for, uh, completed projects. In other words, where all the work was done on the permits, the money is received, and the work to process and was performed, we should, should have had some, you know, I would have liked to have seen some figures for that. We don't have them, so, uh, I guess one question I would have for Mr. Scott, is it possible that we can continue this hearing and, uh, get some more information from staff?
Mayor, Councilmember Johnson, it's certainly possible to table this matter. The hearing is now closed, but you have met your ordinance requirement for the hearing.
That's what I thought, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any further comments for the council? Councilman Nelson?
Just a question. I know that the Community Development Committee on June 12th and we on June 16th instructed staff to, to pursue looking at changing the fees. So I guess my question is, has the council changed their mind about the direction that we asked staff to go? Um, you know, I, I hear what everyone else is saying with this, but I, you know, we're at the table here looking at this because we instructed our staff to do this. So if we've changed our mind, then maybe we need to take a look at it and see if we met all of the requirements. I'm fine with table it, to get more information, but I guess I'd like us to look at why we went down this road to begin with.
Thank you, Councilman.
Chris. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I recall, we just, uh, approved the hearing. I don't, the council did not, uh, vote on, um, staff giving us a raised fee schedule. We just said, let's have, we approved the hearing on it, and that's what we're doing here tonight. That's why we all voted for that, this hearing. We all voted aye. You know, we've been told that, uh, the, the aquatic facility in Wilmer, the Civic Center in Wilmer, the ice arena are quality-of-life issues, so we, we can pass on them not bringing in the amount of fees to cover their costs, because they don't. They way, way, way don't. Our fees should be way higher at both facilities, but they're quality-of-life issues. So, so we all accept that. Well, isn't building a home in Wilmer, Minnesota, a quality-of-life issue also for all of us inviting new people here to build and to stay in Wilmer? That's a quality-of-life issue also. As far as the 1997-year, uh, code that was brought up and the fee schedule, uh, the, the year and that fee schedule has nothing to do with our fee schedule. The state changed it about four years ago, and they said every municipality can have, direct their own fee schedule for building, remodeling, but for building new homes, the only requirement is it has to be value-based. That's it. We don't have to go by 94, 97, or 2004. We don't even have a 2014 building code. They're supposed to adopt the 2009 one and start using that. I mean, we're way behind, but this, uh, fee schedule can be whatever we want it to be. It just has to be fair and value-based. Again, uh, the, why don't we do cost accounting on the, uh, aquatic center and the civic center if we, we're required to do it in this area? This request, uh, is to, to increase fees is just, uh, is way out of line, especially for Wilmer, Minnesota. We're, we're not broke. We're in good fiscal shape, and some of that is due to our finance manager in Wilmer, Mr. Okens, who's kept us fiscally conservative and watched our money for the years and years and years and years. I see it as just a revenue stream to add to the, uh, funds that we already have that are, you know, we're about 120% of the state statute of money required, backup money for Wilmer. We're, we're way above the, uh, mark that this data set for cities. I, I think it's a poor thing to be doing at this time.
Councilman Anderson?
Well, I'm, I don't, I'm not interested in getting into a debate, but I think there's one point that I, that I, I think I'm right on, and that's, I think this went to the Community Development Committee, um, and, and they presented that they wanted to move forward. I think that the city council approved going forward, and then at our last meeting, we set the, we set the hearing. So I, I think the council did, did authorize moving ahead with it. It doesn't seem to be a lot of, of interest in, in doing this. I have a real concern, looking at the 13 numbers, that it, if that trend continues, we, we are covering our costs. So I, I, I have some concerns about that, but I don't, I don't sense a need to continue this. I, I think we should just vote it up or down and move on.
Mayor Yanis?
Go ahead.
Just to, maybe, can I ask Bruce Peterson, just to discuss 2013? Did we have some major, um, totals? Or I mean, were the numbers of things that were built up, or were the dollar amounts for things that were? How did that total get to that?
Evaluation of construction increased dramatically from 2012 to 2013. That's what drove the fees up. The bulk of the cost, because they are budget and department-related, we're all aware that those have been flat for 10 years or decreasing. So you're not going to see those numbers go up very much. It's the revenue that really jumped last year, and it was due to some, uh, large projects. And we've got some large projects this year, which is exactly, uh, what we want to see. By far, the bulk of our permit revenue comes from the commercial, industrial, and institutional side. The residential is really a minor player in our fees. And, uh, you know, it, it seems high to the person paying the permit, but I can assure you that, uh, the fee schedule and the process that the city of Wilmer uses is not any higher than you'd typically find with a regional center. And I've, uh, got some of that information as well. St. Cloud uses the League of Minnesota Cities fee schedule. I'm sorry, Mankato uses the League of Minnesota Cities fee schedule. Most other cities are using the 94 or 97 fee schedules, but I've yet to find too many cities that do cost accounting the way I think it needs to be done. And is it a rough number? Absolutely. But with the way our budgeting is done, it's as close as you're going to get as a true reflection of providing that cost. You know, it's, it's, it's a simple fact that those reports weren't filed. I'm going to shift gears to that. There's a reason for it. There was staff doing the work for multiple departments, and time just flat out didn't allow it. It wasn't one of our priorities. It's not a priority of the state of Minnesota, I can assure you, because we hear no contact from them at all with regard to that matter. Uh, the Builders Association of Minnesota makes it a priority of theirs, but I can assure you, it is not a priority of the Department of Labor and Industry. You know, and, and again, uh, some comments were made about the fixed costs. The staffing levels for our department, for the inspectors, are dictated by the state of Minnesota. If we wish to do any permitting and inspections of public projects or institutional projects, we have to staff our department at a level that is approved by the state of Minnesota, and they have guidelines for that, for the amount of public projects we have out here and the amount of permitting we do for those projects. We are staffed at the extreme bare minimum to handle those projects, according to the state of Minnesota. You know, that's really all I've got to say on this matter. It's totally up to the council. Staff brought it to committee. We got direction. If you've changed your mind and you want to go a different direction, that's your call.
Mayor Yanis?
Go ahead.
If we table this or, or vote it down, how, can we go through our budgeting process and look at, um, budgeting needs, et cetera? I mean, is it something that we can come back and look at again, um, in any timeframe, or?
Before the end of the year?
I'm just curious.
Mayor, members of the council, I don't see there'd be any reason you couldn't take this up at any time in the future. Voting one way or the other today shouldn't change that.
Councilman Fagerley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Mr. Peterson stated, staff brought this to the community development. It wasn't anyone on the council that requested this. The committee did have concerns of increasing the, the fees for residential, because we want people to build homes and, and live and work right here. Personally, I have no problem increasing the commercial rates, and I did ask that, um, a meeting ago, and we can't increase that and keep residential lower? Because there is more work involved in the commercial, but, you know, I have no sense in, uh, increasing the residential rates. I want people to live here, so. I would say, I'll make a motion to approve it so we can vote on it and be done with it. But I'm going to vote no.
I didn't hear the motion. Would you repeat that, please?
Introduce the.
Introduce the ordinance for the increase.
Okay. I'll second.
A motion has been made and seconded to, uh, adopt the ordinance to, uh, raise the new, or to have the new fee schedule. All those in favors? Oh, I'm sorry, this is a resolution.
Just one comment. Usually you have discussions sometimes after the motion, but, um, I was, uh, looking back, I've been around here since 86, on and off, and, um, Irma Peterson, who was a former councilwoman from the 3rd Ward, she retired from her position, and I was fortunate enough to be elected. And when building permit fees were, were up at that time, and they were, they were fairly reasonable, we had one building inspector, Nora Olson, great man, did his inspection work for the whole city. And she was really upset with why in the world would we charge the people that want to be citizens of our community additional fee just for them to build a house? And, and that stuck with me for quite a few years. We should be encouraging incentives to have people come into the community, especially since we're now, as a regional center, competing against the county, outlying areas for, um, location for people to build. If, if a person wants to build in the county, um, they can save themselves 15% of their tax statement. What's the incentive for them to build in Wilmer? And I, I think personally, if the contractors were to testify here from the local area, they can see the amount of homes that have been built in the city versus the county. There's a great disparity. The county is building many more houses out in the rural areas than we are in the city of Wilmer. I think people are finally wising up, and that's not healthy for our community. If we lose tax base, we lose the revenue, but we still have to provide services that people are using, are using, uh, our facilities and our community. For it to be stable, we need to have, uh, more growth in housing in, in the city of Wilmer, to sustain the cost of living adjustments and increased infrastructure costs. And if it continues at the trend we have now, it's, it's a concern. And, uh, building permit fees are part of that, just like we discussed at the 2040 Plan at our committee meeting I was, or table I was at, that, that all has an impact in throwing people out of the middle-income home. And that's where stability comes from, is those types of individuals. So additional fees this time, I, I can't support it. Appreciate it. Thank you.
We have a motion on the table. Go ahead, Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of comments. The, uh, we had a budget meeting last week, and, uh, I believe that the number of $60,000, $61,000 was, uh, used as, uh, what we gained from new development from last year. Or was it two years ago? We were buying two years, is that what it is? But it was about $60,000 because of development in Wilmer. We, we gained that in property taxes. It's new to our budget.
61.
$61,000. And I, I must ask the, uh, city attorney for both Mr. Ahma and myself, that, uh, you can explain that it's not a conflict of interest for us to be involved in this discussion or even to vote on it. Am I correct?
Yes, Councilmember Christensen, I, I do believe that's correct. You're, as contractors, obviously have an interest, but in my view, it's no different than any other member of your trade or industry. And that's kind of the standard, I think. These are very fact-specific inquiries, but I, I think that's generally the rule of thumb. If you had a matter before you relating to a specific permit fee imposed on you relating to a specific permit fee imposed on a project you were working on, that would be different, but you're talking about a citywide fee that has the same application to everyone in your trade and industry. So, I don't believe that would rise to the level of a disqualifying conflict of interest.
Thank you. And then one other comment would be the, the people that this affects, you know, if we raise the fees, aren't here to speak. They're people that are going to build homes this year, next year, the year after. They aren't here to speak. And I always maintain that my position on being in the Council is to speak for the little guy, because they can't attend all these meetings. They can't attend the community development meetings, and the public works, and the finance, and the labor. And they can't attend council meetings. I'm here for them, and I'm speaking for those people that are possibly going to build in the city limits of Wilmer here, this year, next year, down the road. So, it's an easy one to, easy, easy one to raise and get revenue from, because they aren't here to speak, and then they can't speak for themselves. Thank you.
Counselman DeBleek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess Councilmember Amon mentioned the last Friday's symposium that 2040 put together on brain drain, and said that there's a lot of people houses being built out in the county. And some of the reasons they gave for that are just exactly what we would expect to happen and expect to happen here within our area. So, that's, that's one thing we may or may not be able to influence or change, is whether or not somebody wants to build a house within the city of Wilmer, or they want to build out in the country in one of the townships. That's more discussion on that than more, a lot more, can be talked and planned around that area. But Mr. Peterson mentioned, too, most of our building fees come from institutional and business activity, not so much from housing. So, and it looks like 2013, looking at those numbers, we're pretty much right on with our, with our costing for that department. Granted, 2011 and twelve were kind of low years, but we should keep, keep monitoring it as to what 2014 is. But if we're as close as where we're thirteen, I would say we're, we're doing quite well with, with the fees for that department.
Thank you. Counselman Dacken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's fair to say that, as Councilmember just said, that the, the bulk of the fees come from commercial and industrial. They have the ability to pass it on to their customers. Individuals don't have that same option to pass it on to anybody. They pay it themselves.
Any further comments?
One other comment, if we already received, that the National Association of Home Builders came out with a report on the cost of building permit fee increases and what it does to housing nationwide, based on the increases of two, three, four, five percent. And the statistics that they came up with were showing that it dropped, or I think it, it put about three to four percent of the median-income home families out of the bracket to be able to afford a home. So, there is an impact, and unfortunately, it's expensive to build homes. I just want to further also state the, this could be looked upon, as Mr. Christiansen said, since we are the home builders, or one of the home builders and remodelers in the county, that there is a reason for it. So, I just want to make it state that any permit fee that I include in my costs for a building project are paid for by the owners. And that's added into the cost of the entire project. So, there's real no benefit or gain. It's just a service we provide for the customers, and to make sure we go through building permits and comply with the current, current, current laws on how to build a house. I, again, I, this is going to be coming up again as other, as we continue this financial struggle in our community, and I, I just think that there's other services that we provide to businesses and to other people in the community, and we don't want to get a return on that. It's just part of, part of the cost that we have to do to new business, to build a nice community. And I think building permit fees should not be the major resource for doing that. It encourages more growth in the community, I believe. And if we can get two to three percent more people to build a home with less permit fees, not only for my own personal gain, but just to have a better income base in our community, in our city, I think we should be looking at that also. Thank you.
Any further comments? We have a motion on the table. It's for a resolution, am I right?
Ordinance. But it's roll call.
Okay, roll call. Councilmember Christiansen.
No.
Amon.
No.
Nelson.
No.
Johnson.
No.
Dacken.
No.
Fagerly.
No.
DeBleek.
No.
Anderson.
No.
Zero ayes, eight nays. Motion tails. We have a Wilmer City Open Forum. Is there, let's see, Earl Canutson, did you need to speak anymore?
No, I'm done.
Robert?
No, I'm done.
Okay. Then, Doreen Magnuson?
I think it's been four years, sorry, Doreen Magnuson, Thirteenth Street Southwest. It's been about four years since I have been to a council meeting, and try not to miss them on a Monday night. And I guess I'm seeing the same thing in person as I'm seeing on the television. I get very discouraged, along with many of the other people in our community. I was born, I was raised, I graduated from Wilmer High School, I went away from school, to school. I've lived in several states. We came back after we lost a son, and have lived here since about seventy-seven. And I don't want to take you back, but I'm going to, because I don't know how many of you were raised in Wilmer. I can pretty much point out the ones that I think were. And to remember what we grew up in was a wonderful community, wonderful council. And I have become more and more interested in how our government functions. When I watched the council, I wished I could see more unity. The word dysfunction has been used so many times by the West Central Tribune, and by people who are running for the next election. And I think the dysfunction myself is coming from a certain organization in Wilmer, with a few people who want to run the city, the administration, and the council. This is my thinking. I don't think that we need to have the backstabbing that is being done by everybody. The little pouting, the picking on each other. Point in, I'm going to tell you for the first time, I went to a, a legal woman's voting two weeks ago tomorrow night. I was new there, and I don't know how many other people were new there, except there were two young people that were new there, that I was not aware they were there until after the fact. And they sat in the back at a table with a couple other people, and were listening to one of the council people sitting at this table. Every time Councilman Christiansen spoke, words came out such as, "He doesn't know what he's talking about," "He is crazy," and a few other things. The young boy turned to the individual and said, "You need to grow up." The meeting continued, and he turned around again, and he said, "Do you know, I want schools whenever your children?" And it continued on with more abuse of Council Christiansen. And finally, the young boy, towards the end, when Mr. Christiansen was doing his final talk, got up, walked away from the table. Did he have a tear in his eye? I don't know. The young woman that sat there turned to the individual, and she said, "Do you know that you're talking about my uncle?" And we knew none of this until after the meeting. So, here are three people who are interested in government, want to know what's going on with the administration of Wilmer, with the city council, and with the backstabbing that's being done by the Chamber of Commerce and certain people. It, it gets very disgusting. I'm probably one of the older people in this room right now that has been able to see what's been going on. And my name is Doreen Christiansen Magnuson. I think that what you're doing to each other is unforgivable practically. And heaven forbid that you're teaching, we are teaching, our families, our children, or our churches are teaching all of this wrong stuff, because we will not have good citizens. I'm all done. I'm going to say, God bless the council, God bless the administration, and God bless the city of Wilmer.
Thank you, ma'am. I see that that is all that is written down to, to speak this evening, so we'll move into the Cable Advisory Committee Report of August thirteenth.
We have the Community Development-
I'm sorry, Community Development Committee Report of August eleventh, two thousand fourteen. Counselman Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number two was public comments. There was no one there to speak. Item three was the mobile home parks update. Kim Fetters, Regency East and West Mobile Homes Park Manager for the past three years, was present to discuss the operations and maintenance of the parks with the committee. She noted that there had been a number of improvements made to the parks, and that they have evicted numerous bad tenants and removed many dilapidated, dilapidated homes. Other improvements include tree removal, landscape changes, and infrastructure improvements. Currently, the east park has forty mobile homes, and the west park has eighty homes. Most are occupied by families, many are long-term tenants. Mrs. Fetters is unaware of any long-range plans to make major changes to the parks. The owners have indicated an interest in purchasing some mobile homes to rent out. Both parks have been listed for sale, but there is no immediate buyer. The committee asked about storm shelters. There is a storm shelter at each park, however, due to vandalism, they are usually kept locked. Approximately ten tenants and the maintenance people have keys to the shelters. Mrs. Fetters said that they have minimum contact with the county, who is the licensing authority for mobile home parks. She mentioned some tax issues that had, they had with the county relative to demolished homes. She said the number of police calls are down due to the demolition of vacant and abandoned homes. There is no electricity available to the homes, so they are no longer attractive to squatters. She also said the city staff works well with management. She went on to mention that the police department will not pick up any stray dogs within the park, but they didn't know why. I don't want to put the chief on the spot now, but do you have an answer for that, or would you like to tell us in a couple of weeks?
I can certainly give you some information right now. That question was emailed to me after your meeting, and in looking it up, we do, we have responded to about sixty calls for service within the last year regarding just animals in the both trailer parks. I'm not sure where she's coming up with that information. We have not restricted our staff on going there to deal with any animal issues for removing animals, or dealing with barking dogs, animal bites, anything to that effect.
Okay, so you are attending those calls?
Correct, we are.
Because there was a discussion there, and it said, well, since it was private property, you probably didn't want to go on the site, but-
Yeah, and any type of complaint like that, whether it be private property or public, we would answer the call there, and haven't altered our, our practice over the past few years.
All right. That's good to know. Thank you. She also had a concern. They have an old wood trailer house there, and they were just wondering if the city could do anything to help demolish it, or the fire department have a fire burn there. I don't know if the fire chief would like to make a comment on that, or?
I was aware of that. Bruce Peterson had given me the information while I was on vacation last week. It's really up to if the DNR and PACA think there's valuable training involved in burning that down. They're not interested in having the fire department just burn down the structure, just burn it down. So, there may be some value, but it would be up to the DNR to give me a permit to do that.
Okay, so who would check on that, then?
I will check on that, um, to see. I will produce that request to the DNR and see what they get back to me on that.
All right. Thank you. And for, if they don't have a fire burn demolishing it, I know we don't rent out city equipment, but is there anything we could do to help them clean up the park?
We can certainly take a look at it. I don't know that I have an answer for you this evening, but we can take a look at it and see if there's anything that we can do, or certainly, we'll, we'll look into it.
Okay. Have a bulldozer just accidentally go by it. Mrs. Fetters concluded her comments by saying that there is no playground equipment in either of the parks because the teenage tenants from before have destroyed it, which is unfortunate. We did tell her that we recognize and appreciate the improvements to the parks, but that our expectations remain high for park maintenance and aesthetics. Item four, industrial park expansion discussion. Staff presented a draft copy of the final plat of Wilmer Industrial Park Fourth Edition. This is the portion that is being platted west of County Road Five. Staff said they still anticipate bidding the dirtwork and infrastructure services for two thousand fourteen construction. It will all depend on the wetland mitigation process. The wetland technical panel was not able to visit the site until the end of July, therefore delaying final approval on mitigation efforts for the wetlands in the industrial park. The committee discussed stormwater drainage with the, within the expanded industrial park, as well as access. Staff pointed out that all the lots-
The committee discussed stormwater drainage within the expanded industrial-
Would be accessible from interior roads. No driveways will be allowed from county state aid Highway Five or Highway Forty. Number five, old business. Staff informed the committee that they were addressing some concerns by Councilman Amon, and would be returning to the committee with some defined procedures for the business subsidy process. It was noted that some of the information being requested may be considered private, and that the council may not be legally entitled to review- and that the council may not be legally entitled to review it. And new business, there was no business to come before the committee, and the meeting was adjourned. So if there's no questions, I move to file the minutes.
Second.
Question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I was present sitting in for Mr. Dawkins, who was absent at the meeting. One comment I have that I'd like to ask, the city attorney is under old business, the last statement on old business, or sentence says it was noted that some of the information being requested may be considered private and that the council may not be legally entitled to review it. And I'm just, that's a pretty broad statement. I'm trying to understand. I just think an application form should be applied for, just like you do for a planning of zone or perimeter, street vacation, everything else. But as far as the information that we need from a company or corporation that's going to expand in our community, and I hope there's many, the information has to show that there is a but-for clause in tax increment financing, which would mean that the financial data would have to be shown in the application for the council to make an intelligent decision. And I'm just wondering how, at what point, if somebody comes publicly and wants to have tax increment financing or tax assistance, why shouldn't that be made public? If they're asking for public funds, why should it be held behind closed doors until the last minute? I'm just understanding, this has been told to us many, for many years, that we can't, we can't know anything about the project until it's pretty much done or discussed. And I'm questioning how that, how they can circumvent the public process without the elected knowing about the, about the project. I'm just looking for a definition or a breakdown of what we have information, we should be eligible to request from them and what we cannot request from them.
Well, Councilman Amon, I'm not sure exactly what the information was that was considered to be possibly not public. Generally, any information that is provided to the city is public. There's obviously numerous exceptions. I haven't reviewed an actual application to know what, if anything, in that application wouldn't be public. Generally, everything's public. There's, going beyond the issue of what's in an actual application in the documentation submitted to the city in connection with a request for public assistance, there's issues with how much of a company's financial records would be public.
I understand.
Probably only as it relates to the project for which assistance was given. So it's, it would have to be looked at on a case-by-case basis. I have not done that. Generally, though, anything should be public in the application itself.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
We have the, the winner?
We can vote if you want.
Oh, we need to file the minutes on the Community Development Committee Report of August 11th, 2014. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. The Cable Advisory Committee Report on August 13th, 2015, Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did meet as an advisory committee, Citizens Cable Advisory Committee. And present were myself, Dennis Anderson, Larry Fuion, and Linda Mathiason. We haven't met for about three years, so this is a major meeting. We're going to start to meet now about three times a year. Others present at the meeting were Ross Mayby, our Information Systems Coordinator, and Mr. Rudy Veal, who is our cable coordinator. We called the meeting to order at 4:45 p.m. and we listened to an overview of RAC's, RAC Eight, or Wilmer Regional Access Channel Services and Franchise. This is for information only. Our Information Systems Coordinator, Mr. Smaby, gave all the members the opportunity to ask questions on the services and overview of the Wilmer Regional Access Channels. Our coordinator, Rudy Veal, summarized the function of the RAC Eight, of the RAC Studio, how funding is received, and who the services are provided for. Ms. Mathiason asked a question of school board meetings are retained and how long, how long they're retained and are they accessible? And she was informed that the official policy is to retain the footage only for one year and the meetings are accessible via Ustream.com. He also stated he would provide her with the website link to access live feed on the school board meetings. She was advised that only cable subscribers in the county have access to the channels, but that the shows are also available online. So if you're out of town, you can watch them. This item was received for information only. Item number three was a discussion on the proposed franchise changes by Charter, Charter Cable, that is. This is a resolution. Our Information Systems Coordinator, Mr. Smaby, presented the proposed PEG agreement with Charter Cable. This agreement, which was proposed by Charter, would allow them to move the local channels from 818 and 19 to the 180 range. Our coordinator, Mr. Veal, explained to the committee that the city has, had retained the services of Moss and Barnett Law Firm for assistance in drafting this agreement with Charter Cable. And as part of the agreement, the technical standards for the channels would have to be kept at or above their current service level, and the city would receive payment in kind of $3,000 worth of airtime to advertise the new channel locations, and up to $2,000 for new signage on the front of the Wilmer Regional Access Channel building. Following some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed, to approve the PEG agreement, and I will introduce that motion.
Resolution. Second.
Resolution.
The motion has been made to introduce the resolution of the...
To approve the PEG agreement with Charter Cable.
To approve the PEG agreement with Charter Cable. Is there any discussion? Councilman?
If I could, if I could comment, what this is going to mean to Charter Cable subscribers is that sometime in September, and that's what will be advertised, you won't be watching the public access on 818 and 19. It'll be somewhere in the 180 range, and they will be identifying what the channel is. So Charter, people that are watching us now, you'll have to change that sometime in September. You'll go to a different channel. You will be advised of that, but just be aware that that's going to happen.
Go ahead, Councilman Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe before we vote on this, Mr. Smaby and Rudy Veal are both here tonight. If you have, if the council has any questions, it'd be good to ask them. And maybe, maybe Rudy, you want to explain a little, a little further, the change in
Mayor Yanis and members of the council, the resolution is everything that you said in there. One thing that was left out was that, and it was actually the most important thing, is that on January 1st of 2017, Charter is also going to be giving the city an HD channel too. It's going to convert one of our channels to HD. So with that, we're not sure where that channel is going to be at the time, so if you look at the back of the resolution too, I'm guessing you have the same one that I do, that the channels that we're going to be on will be 180, 181, and 188 until that HD channel comes in. We're looking at getting some in kind of $3,000 for advertising. It's also going to be appearing in newspaper, also on the Weather Channel, and then the insertion announcement on a number of the different channels throughout the cable system, but it only is for Charter. For the people that are Windstream, it will not affect them, will still be 18 and 19. We haven't heard anything from Windstream yet on renewal of the franchise. We do and have received a letter from Charter, which that expires at the end of 2016. So the new HD channel will be looked at and received after January 1st of 2017. And you mentioned the compression rates and the signal, making sure that we're at the same level as any of the other broadcast stations, including the HD channel. What that will be, will be determined in, you know, two, two and a half years or so. But that was the reasoning that we wanted to put the HD channel in and negotiate it. Normally, that's done in the renewal process, but we had some bargaining to leverage us to get that channel. We're only the second city now that has been given HD channel in the state of Minnesota along with Winona. So we're in good shape there and moving forward with what we need to do. And this is just something that is not allowed in the current franchise, and we hope that you'll approve this and we can move forward to another era of programming.
Thank you. Thank you, Rudy. Is there any further discussion? Councilman Zeke?
Yeah, a question yet to Rudy now. Said this only affects Charter, which in the franchise agreement expires on the end of 15?
2016.
16, okay. So we're actually reapproving their agreement earlier?
We're just making a change and allowing Charter to relocate. It's not currently something that they can do. They need the city's approval to do that. The HD channel, though, will carry over into the, into the new renewal. So this is just allowing them to do that because they need the city's permission to do that, because it's not allowed in the current franchise.
And the prescribers on the Windstream network are not affected at all by this?
No.
And that franchise agreement is...
The same as what Charter's is.
Which is, will be due or needs to be renegotiated in the end of the...
Yes, both of them will be done hopefully by the year 2017.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Councilman Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question on the 3,000. That's just airtime advertising on Charter? Or do you advertise like on a cat bus or on the radio or newspaper?
I think he said the newspaper, am I right?
Weather Channel.
And the Weather Channel, yeah.
The 3,000 would just be an announcement that we produce or they help us produce that will go on just the Charter cable system. Charter will be in charge of their own advertising on the Weather Channel, in the newspaper, and then they also will be doing the bill insertion. So there'll be, anyone that has cable, that information will come out in their bills. But if they do produce the commercial for us, that amount will be deducted from the 3,000. So we'll look and see what the cost is going to be and see whether or not we'll do it ourselves.
So this will affect anyone that's with Charter, so New London Spicer?
You know, I, someone brought that up, and I'm not sure. I'm guessing because they're going 100% digital, that, and they're a part of the cable system, that that would be, the channels would be in the same in New London Spicer, Candyway, and Pennock.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Amon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The motion carries.
Item number four had to do with future building projects and reviewing the budget. This is a resolution, is required. Our Information Systems Coordinator, Mr. Smaby, explained to the committee the scope of current building projects, repairs, and improvements that are currently needed for the RAC building. Based on the quotes received, the current cost for repairs was estimated to be $25,000. After some discussion, it was, the motion is made, seconded and passed, to transfer $25,000 from the Wilmer Regional Access Channel Reserve Fund for these improvements. Basically, the building is owned by the city and needs some updating, upgrading, and that was the motion, and I will introduce that motion.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to transfer $25,000 from the RAC Reserve Fund for improvements, including to the building itself, am I right?
It is for the building, yes.
For the building.
Is there any discussion?
Question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
What's the current reserves we have in our RAC Eight account, Steve isn't here tonight?
I don't have that number off the top of my head. I think, though, when we were looking at the budget, it was in excess of $150,000. It might even be 200-some thousand. I'd have to get to that, though, I just don't have it off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amon.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that carries.
There being no further business has come before the committee, I would move to file these minutes.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Cable Advisory Committee. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Finance Committee Report on August 14th, 2000, report of August 14th, 2014. Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The meeting was called to order at 4:45, and there were no comments from the public. The main topic of our discussion was the mayor's 2015 budget presentation, and this will be taken for information at this time. Mayor Frank Yanis presented his proposed 2015 budget totaling $33,272,396. Of the total budget, $15,530,66 is for general operating, $2,080,306 is for capital improvements, $1,788,913 is for special revenue internal services, $2,581,277 is for debt service, and $11,291,884 is for the waste treatment plant. It was noted the general operating portion of the budget includes $1,823,386 in transfers for capital improvements. The proposed tax levy of $4,201,028 is $61,294 more than last year, and that is due to new construction valuations, with $4,054,028 for general operating and $147,000 for the street program. An overview of the estimated revenues and expenditures was presented. Revenues include an anticipated minimal increase in local government aid. Changes in the budgeted expenditures include elimination of a human resources position that was unfilled in 2014, and a smaller transfer to capital reserve, and reduction in capital purchases and progress, projects. We noted that the city will be using the last of the local option sales tax funds in 2015, and also stated that the tax levy is the same as last year, but valuations have caused it to increase approximately $61,000. Vice Chair Johnston raised concerns about funding that will be needed for future capital improvements, and asked that research be done to find potential revenue sources to be allocated for the projected capital needs over the next five to 10 years. Councilmember Amon suggested an assessment for everyone in the city for street improvements. It was noted that the city is required to assess at least 20% of the properties in each street improvement project. Councilmember DeBlick expressed concerns about maintaining the city parks. Councilmember Christensen asked about specific items listed on the capital improvements plans. Potential funding sources for projected capital improvements needed over the next several years will be researched for future meetings. It was also noted there will be future council work sessions to discuss the capital improvement plan, pavement management, community partners, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Hospital and HRA, and other items that will be requested by the council. The Finance Committee will continue to review and discuss the proposed 2015 budget over the next several meetings prior to the public meeting to be held December 2014. That was for information only. The one task that the committee will have to do is to set the levy, and we will be coming with a recommendation on that. That has to be done by the end of September. The next item had to do with air conditioning budget reallocation. Staff explained that the air conditioning unit that cools the basement of City Hall needs to be replaced. Noting the unit is 20 years old, staff reported that the coils in the condenser are burned out, the compressor has quit working, and the freon needs to be replaced to be within current regulations. There are unused funds totaling $5,585 in the 2014 engineering other services budget, which could be allocated to cover the additional cost of replacing this air conditioner. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I'll introduce a resolution to authorize reallocating $5,585 from the 2014 engineering other services budget to City Hall Capital Outlay to cover the additional cost for... Budget to City Hall Capital Outlay to cover the additional cost for replacement of the air conditioning unit.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to, for air conditioning budget reallocation in the amount of $5,585. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fairley.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that carries.
Then we talked a little bit about some future agenda items that'll be coming up. It was noted that in the future, at a future Finance Committee meeting, we'll be looking at some liquor license violations, the city auditorium funding, multifamily waste treatment schedule and definitions, and the 2013 departmental overages. So that is some of the things that we'll be looking at going forward. There was no old business, and there was no new business, so unless there's questions, I would move to file these minutes.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Finance Committee meeting. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the minutes, it says that I've suggested an assessment for everyone in the city for street improvements. The statement, I believe, was for street maintenance, a one-time or a, for street maintenance repair, which we're falling behind on.
I'm sorry, was that for a comment from you?
Yes, that comment was from me, and it was, it's in here that it's suggesting assessment for everyone in the city for street improvements. It shouldn't be improvements, it'd be for street maintenance repair. To get caught up, because we're far behind on our street maintenance.
But everyone is correct.
Yes, but everyone is correct, yeah.
Would you change that, please?
We can make that correction to the minutes if that's what the council wants.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Consideration of special assessment hearing for unpaid hedge removal. Kevin, do you want to talk to us about those?
Mayor Yanish, members of the council, the next three are similar items that we're asking the council to set hearings on these matters. The first one before you is for removing a hedge that was causing some visual traffic concerns. It was not done properly, so the city or its agent trimmed that, and those are costs, and that could be assessed. The next one follows, if you allow me to go all in a row, and we can take similar action. The next one, by a different municipal code, is for the myriad of weed and grass mowings that the city has. That's actually a large summer activity. You'll see a list before you that needs to be set. And the hearing was recommended to be at 7:03 after the first hearing on the hedge. And then the last one that we always do is some tree removal, and these are some, I guess I'm not sure what kind of trees, most likely Dutch elm that were not properly removed on time, not on the boulevard but in the backyard, which we fully have control on. Those costs are listed, and that would be a third hearing at 7:04.
And these are all on the 2nd of September?
They would be on the 2nd of September if you take proper action to move the meeting to September 2nd.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we set this assessment hearing for the unpaid hedge removal for 7:01 on September 2nd.
Second.
That motion, is there any discussion on that? We, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries to be set for September 2nd.
Second.
Okay.
Then I would move we do the unpaid weeds and grass mowing at 7:02 on the 2nd.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded that we do the weed grass mowing removal on September 2nd at 7:02. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
And let's do this tree removal at 7:03 on the 2nd.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to do the tree removal on 7:03 on September 2nd. Is there any discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. These two that are on here, Kevin, they're going to be done? Or they were done?
We have asked them to remove the trees. They did not, and so Scott Latibar takes charge to have the trees removed, and then they pay the cost. And they chose at this point not to pay the cost. Many of these that you see will get a notice tomorrow, and then some come in and pay. But these are two that are obviously higher than mowing, but the cost of removal is significant, and so they have been removed and properly taken care of.
So the city or Public Works makes the decision that that tree in the backyard is diseased and bad? It's got to go?
It's got to go, or it'll infect other trees.
Okay.
And so they're given proper notice to take it down.
So --
And some people choose, I think, just to, just let the city come and take care of it.
So then, I had a call from a fellow in the southwest part of town. His neighbor's got this big tree that's dangerous, huge cottonwood, you know? They die from the inside out, and then they fall over. He was wondering that same thing, if the city would do it? If they deem it dangerous?
Infectious?
Or infectious.
I'm not certain about that one. I could lead it, ask Sean, but the others are programs that are adopted. And so once you have your oak wilt or your Dutch elm disease, we are in control of that to save all the other trees, so that's an order we can clearly stand behind on the laws. I'm not certain about can we jump in and help somebody with a withering hollow tree? And I don't know our practice.
If they're willing to pay for it, is what I'm saying. If the guy's --
That's an interesting one. I'm not sure of that answer.
I don't think we necessarily have a right to do it.
Okay.
But, you know, to force in order to take it down, I think it becomes a private property issue, unless it is a diseased or tree.
That's right. If it's a threat to the public safety, the city could take the action that is taken here. If it's a private issue, the city couldn't force them to. I don't know, I mean, I don't see a reason why they couldn't do it if asked by the property owner.
I told him I'd ask, and I'm glad I got brought up, so, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. So now we have special assessment hearings for 7:01, 7:02, and 7:03 on the September 2nd. Am I right?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Notice of termination of agreement with Candy Y County Eagle Lake Sanitary Sewer District. Charlene, would you like to take that one, please?
Yes, the city has had an agreement with the city of Wilmer, Candy Y County, and then the Eagle Lake Sanitary Sewer District since 1990. That agreement is set to expire in August of 25th of 2016. Per that agreement, we must give at least two years' notice to the county and Eagle Lake Sanitary Sewer if we intend to renegotiate that agreement. It's our recommendation that we do. That has been a long agreement, probably unlikely to enter into a 20-year agreement again. But we fully intend to work with Eagle Lake Sanitary Sewer and Candy Y County to renegotiate a new district, but we are required to take this action to formally give them notice upon termination. And I've spoken with the county administrator, and we've also spoken with representative of Eagle Lake Sanitary Sewer District, and they understand this action is coming from the city.
Move to approve. Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to approve the notice of termination of agreement with Candy Y County, the Eagle Lake Sanitary Sewer District. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. We need to reschedule the first meeting in September due to Labor Day. Kevin, do you want to handle that one, please?
Mayor Yanish, members of the council, I trust you will all be enjoying Labor Day, and that is September 1st, and that's not a good day to hold a council meeting, so we'd like you to move it to Tuesday, September 2nd.
Thank you.
Move to approve. Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to approve the rescheduling of the first meeting in September due to the Labor Day holiday to September 2nd from September 1st. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Is there any new business? Is there any old business?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Just a quick question on the, the Finance Committee meeting's coming up, Dennis. You're going to be talking about the street projects and how to look at different sources of funding for maintenance and that. Is it possible to have a full council there? Or is, or do you think it wouldn't be? I think that was my original thought, was to have the full council and staff come up with some ideas. I don't know if that's going to be too cumbersome or not.
No, I think that will be one of the full council work sessions that we'll have, where we are going to talk about street maintenance and financing options, and I also want to get a handle on what kind of condition are our streets really in? Are they as bad as what we think or worse than what we think? So I think we need to do that, but that will be full council.
Okay, thank you.
Announcement of council meeting dates if there is no more new business or old business. Councilman Anderson, Finance.
Finance will meet Monday, August 25th, 4:45.
Public Works, Councilman Christensen.
August 26th, Tuesday, 4:45.
Community Development, Councilman Fairley.
No meeting scheduled.
Labor, Councilman Newman.
No meeting scheduled today.
I will entertain a motion to --
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have one announcement.
Sure.
Under the 2040, on this coming Friday, August 22nd, there's a, one of the movies in the park being sponsored by the, and organized by the Vision 2040 under Things to Do. The movie will be the Lego Movie. It'll be scheduled for at Robins Island, but if the weather is inclement or whatever, unable to be there, it'll be at the React Building as the backup location, so. These have been well-attended events, and if you have a chance, try and, try and be starting around dusk or approximately at that time.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Move to adjourn. Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. We are adjourned.